John Miller.
Here.
Steve Becker.
Here.
Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Michael DeLecky.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Tonight, we have a public hearing scheduled for ordinance 12-01 repealing and recreating section 22.0514 (D) and creating section 22.0514 (F), the limited occupancy residential overlay district, a petition process for the Arlo District. We'll begin with staff presentation.
Okay, the council had previously adopted by ordinance the creation of the limited occupancy overlay district. This particular ordinance would be a modification to that. Essentially, it's a modification that would allow the creation of a overlay district by petition. Residents or a neighborhood could initiate through a petition process the creation of a overlay district for their neighborhood. So this ordinance would provide the process that would be followed to go through that creation of that district. Generally, the outline or the structure of this I borrowed from a process in the ordinance that we have in place for creating historic district. So that's the general framework that I followed. But essentially, it says the district, there is no limit on or a minimum or maximum number of parcels that would be included, but they have to have at least 75 percent of the property owners sign the petition within that proposed district in order for it to be considered. If they have that 75 percent, then it's a simple majority vote at the council level. If they have 75 percent but less than 100 percent, excuse me, if they have 100 percent of the property owners, then it's a simple majority vote. If they have 75 percent but less than 100 percent, then it requires a supermajority or three-quarters vote of the council. And I would point out one item. I had a property owner, a citizen, asked the question just for clarification, but the way it's worded is it says three-quarters of the entire membership of the common council, which means six. It's not three-quarters of those present and voting on that. So just for clarification, everybody's aware of that. And that is the way it's worded in the historic district. Based on a question that I received at the last meeting, we did make a minor modification. There was some confusion as to when exactly the process would start as far as a moratorium on the creation of the district, since it would place limits on the ability to rent the property. We're establishing a moratorium when the process starts, that no initial rental licenses could be issued until the process is completed. And the previous language that, beginning at the ordinance's introduction, that was a little too vague to determine exactly what that means. So we're clarifying the language that if a license is applied for prior to the close of business for City Hall on the day of the meeting of the Plan Commission, when they're going to first consider that ordinance. Basically, if they get the application for a license in before that, then they're good to go if the district is created. Otherwise, they would be, any existing rental would be legal nonconforming use if it's within a created district, and they could continue to operate under the provisions of nonconforming use. Otherwise, any new rentals within a created district would have to comply with the requirements of the district. And then there's a provision that basically the district could be removed following the same procedures. Are there any questions?
I have one, Joel. You say there's no minimum or maximum number of properties that can be in the district, is that right?
Correct.
So it can be as small as two or three?
Yes, they would have to be contiguous.
Okay.
To form a district, but there's no restriction on the number of parcels.
Okay.
But they have to be contiguous?
Correct.
Does contiguous include across the street?
Yes.
Other questions for Joe?
And if it's less than 75 percent that's signed, then it's just a non-
Then we would not bring it-
It's a nonpetition?
We would not bring it forward for consideration.
Other questions? Okay. Tonight, we have one, oh, excuse me, I was throwing one here. We have one person who'd like to speak in favor, Dick Rundle. Would you please come forward, state your name and address, please? Also, while he does that, Mary Beerbrower and Evelyn Doosbury, John Doosbury, Melody Coppin, Sylvia Karowski, and Rita Elver have all registered in favor of, that is in support of, this ordinance change.
My name is Dick Rundle, and I reside at 1270 Perry Drive. And I do support this overlay district because it does give, I think, the neighbors in certain areas that are close to the university an opportunity to maintain their single-family neighborhood with that type of environment I think that all of us who live in those neighborhoods appreciate. So I look at this as being an opportunity to help us maintain the kind of neighborhood that we prefer to live in. I do have some questions, and I don't know if you can answer them at this time, or you want to do it at some other point. I think one of them may have been, one, the first one is, I'm looking at, would be page two. I think it's of the revised one. Down at the bottom would be under petitions, part two. It refers to the proposed boundary of the overlay district. Is that, my question is, is that boundary determined by the number of residents that are to be included in the overlay district? That would be my first question. And how are those boundaries determined? It would be part of what I have. And one reason I'm asking is that, excuse me, is that, you know, if you planned the district in a certain way, just including those residents who really truly want to be in the part of, or be part of the overlay district, you could conceivably have a district that consists mostly of, you know, you could get 100 percent of the people, so to speak. And that's why I wondered if there's any other definition of the overlay district itself, or the boundaries, how they're determined, that we should be considering. And then there was one of the, if you go onto page three, it's part B. And if you go down to item two, it refers to failure to comply with the boundary requirements. I'm not sure what that would be, other than the fact that it might be they are not contiguous or something like that, but that's another question I had. And then insufficient number of signatures, it was part three under that same section, part B. I didn't know what would be, what would constitute an insufficient number of valid signatures. If everybody that's in the district wants to be in there and has signed it, I assume that would meet it, but I don't know what conditions would it be, would occur where there wouldn't be a sufficient number of valid signatures.
I think Joe just indicated that if it was fewer than 75 percent, that that would be an insufficient number.
Right. Or if it was signed by a renter, not the property owner, that would not be a valid signature, that would not-
Okay. And then the, I think on the next page would be page four. It's part five, common council action. I think I understand that, part of minimum of 75 percent but less than 100. And again, a few, I'm assuming that if you have all of the people who are in the district really want to be in it, that probably is not a condition, but I suppose if you're going to somehow form a district that does not, that does include people who maybe prefer not to be there, I suppose that's where the 75 percent comes in play. And the very end of that, part five, under council, common council action, it said, "Any ordinance is not adopted within six months of its introduction shall be deemed denied." I'm not sure what conditions would cause this not to be considered in six months. I know there's some proposals for different developments and so forth, it just reverses true. If it's not adopted within six months, it's automatically deemed approved rather than denied. So that's another question I had. And-
Excuse me, Dick, where in the packet was that last part you referred to?
It would be under common council action. It's the very last sentence.
You know what page that is?
Got it, thank you.
Page four on my printout. I don't know if it prints out the same for everybody. And the last one is the, oh, I had some questions on if there were any people who had rental property in the overlay district. It looks as though they can continue to use it. I suppose it's a nonconforming piece of property, but if they were to be included somehow, that that could exist as nonconforming, but yet would not have to comply with the overlay district arrangement. And I assume that, the one question I had, I don't see anything in here that says that that would continue until a property changes hands, but I was wondering if that just continues as long as that property remains rental property. So those are some of the questions I had in regards to this. I do support it. It gives the neighbors a chance to do something to maintain, do something about the makeup of their neighborhood, the character of their neighborhood, and the environment that we live in. So I think it's a good idea, basically. I support it.
Thank you. There are no public statements against or public statements in general submitted council discussion. Maybe we could address some of Dick's questions here, too, with this.
You want me to try to address those? Sure. He had some questions regarding the boundaries of the district and to determine if they were valid. I guess the things we'd be looking at to make sure that they are contiguous parcels, and they're not, you know, random parcels scattered throughout the city. This district is also only applicable to R1 and R2 zoned properties, so we want to make sure that the properties within that district are not zoned R3 or some other zoning, otherwise they would not be valid. So those would be some of the issues we'd consider as far as determining, you know, if the boundary is valid. Otherwise, when we're talking the boundary of the property, it's basically the properties that are within that proposed district. That's what we're referring to as the boundary. He had a question regarding the six months, if it's not adopted. Since we are imposing a moratorium on the issuance of licenses, we don't want to have the potential that somebody could start the petition and it has some issues, and then they have to go back and redo some information, and it's kind of hanging out there forever. We need to have a final date of when a decision is made or not. So that kind of gives an end limit if things get held up for some particular reason. He had a question about the nonconforming situation. If a district is created and it has an existing licensed rental property, they would be continue, able to continue without restrictions on the maximum number, other than the current restrictions of foreign related. They would lose that nonconforming nature if it ceases to be a licensed rental property for a year or more, for whatever reason that may occur. Otherwise, new properties could become rentals, but they would be subject to the requirements of this overlay district. I'm not sure if I got all his questions or not. Those are the ones I remember.
Joe, because is what you just said, if I have a property and it's nonconforming in the district and currently, it has four people in it, and as long as I maintain my license, I can keep four people, but what happens if I sell it?
That doesn't matter. Ownership doesn't matter.
The owner could-
As long as the person you sell it to continues-
It continues to have four people in it.
Right. The license would have to remain valid. I mean, if you buy, sell it to somebody else and they let the license lapse, then it would lose that nature, but the ownership itself doesn't cease the situation. Did I get all his questions? I'm not sure if I remember all of them.
I think so. Other discussion or questions for Joe?
And if you have more than one parcel in the, within the boundary, you can sign the petition more than once?
Yes.
Okay. And if more than one person owns the parcel?
I think they would have to come into agreement on the-
They can own-
That property.
If it's owned by four people, it's one signature, not four.
Right.
Just one.
Joe, I brought this up at the meeting in December about the nonconforming use. And I had sent out an email today, which I know you received, at least I hope you did, asking that if this were to pass, that the language could be changed so that a property that is currently used as an income property, rented to four people, will continue to be a conforming use in this new overlay district. And I say that because you will recall that at our December meeting, we had a concern expressed by Jenner Towers. They were not conforming in the current B2 district, and so we specifically, as a council, changed their zoning so that they were conforming. The reason it became an issue for them is that they were looking at refinancing, and they had difficulty obtaining financing as a result of the property being nonconforming. So in an overlay district, by taking a property that is currently legally used with foreign related and changing it into nonconforming, you're presenting the same issue to that property owner, which is that financing could be difficult to obtain. So I guess my question would be, if this passes, can language be inserted that says that because the property was being used in the current way, which is foreign related, that it is conforming simply because it is legally being used now, and changing it to an overlay district does not have to change that?
Well, I guess the first thing, I was a little confused with you. I did receive your email, and I wasn't sure exactly the distinction that you were trying to make because you mentioned in there that if the current rental license is discontinued for a year, the property then reverts to the new district rules. I mean, that's the same thing as what would happen if it's nonconforming use.
Except that if you go on to the financing portion of it, if it's a nonconforming property and I want to refinance, it's going to be noticed when the title company researches that property that is now nonconforming, which puts me in jeopardy as far as refinancing. I understand that the usage can continue if I continue with my license, but that doesn't help me with the refinancing.
Yeah. I guess the distinction, it's still the same impact on the property that it-
Sorry?
The distinction, I don't see the distinction, I guess, from what you proposed, other than the terminology. The impact on the property is still the same, that they could continue, but if they lose it for a year, then they lose that.
Right. And for terms of the city, that's fine. I'm saying for terms of financing, it's not fine.
Can I jump in for a second here? We wouldn't be creating any nonconforming uses with this zoning district. This zoning district is not rezoning individual properties. It's when you rezone the properties that you create the nonconforming uses. So just implementing a new zoning district does not change the zoning on individual properties. Okay, I see a lot of confused looks.
But what it does do is create a nonconforming use, does it not?
When you assign it to a property.
Maybe. If you have a rental property and Arlo is applied over the top of it.
We're not applying Arlo over any properties.
You lost me.
You've lost all of us, I think.
The ordinance that's being considered this evening institutes a petition process within the ordinance. That's all it does. It doesn't infect any properties anywhere in the city.
No, but what happens if one goes through?
Right.
And in Arlo district is imposed over the top of an existing rental property, which is grandfathered in, we get that.
Right.
But at that point, it becomes a nonconforming use, does it not?
My message was that that's a separate decision, a separate vote, a separate consideration by the city council. That's not what you're considering tonight.
As to whether it would be nonconforming?
Whether or not you apply this zoning code to a property and create a nonconforming use.
Sure, we understand that, I think.
Okay.
Question is, do we want to create a nonconforming use similar to what Jenner Towers experienced, which would then presumably, at least potentially, handicap the owner of that property, who would then not be able to potentially refinance because it is now nonconforming after that rezoning occurs?
Right.
Did I get that right?
Sounds good.
You got it right. But I understand the distinction that I believe the city manager and Joe are making is that tonight, we're only addressing the issue of whether or not a petition process should be allowed.
Correct.
And so we cannot address the issue of nonconforming?
No, I'm saying that, I don't know if he's saying the same thing, but that's a decision that you should definitely consider when you decide whether you want to create that district or not. Do you want to create, first of all, you don't know for sure if there's going to be nonconforming properties. If they're not rentals, you're not creating any nonconforming properties. It's only if you're creating a district that has rentals that you would be creating a nonconforming property. And then I think the council would have to make the decision at that time, do we want to create nonconforming properties when we create this district? If you've got a concern about that, then maybe you shouldn't create the district that has nonconforming properties. That's the point I'm trying to make.
And then what you're saying, Eileen, if I understand, is there any way to change the verbiage in this ordinance so that you don't create nonconforming properties or uses if this ordinance is adopted and then subsequently a district is applied to a district?
That would be my question. That was a question I had originally asked when we were asked to pass this ordinance to begin with.
I think the answer is no. I mean, at least, at least the way it's set up now, properties that would be, if this ordinance passes and if a district is created and there is rental property in there that is properly licensed, it would be a nonconforming, a legal nonconforming use. That's just what it would be.
Right.
But I think your question is, is there a way to change the language of this tonight so that such properties would not be considered nonconforming, but they would be considered conforming until such time as the license lapses? Correct? Can we do that tonight?
I'd think for a second on that.
Okay.
Would you amend the original?
I wonder about the idea of drawing the boundaries. In other words, a nonconforming property would not have to be included in the district. In other words, you just draw around it.
That's the only way to do it. And that's, that's part of the reason-
We do the same thing with the downtown historic district. We just, that just jogs back and forth. And so there are properties in and properties out. And so we could do the same thing with a district created in R1 or R2.
And that's part of the reason that we did not include a minimum or maximum number of parcels that have to be included, so it provides more flexibility on the boundaries. And it also is part of the reason we had the three-quarters vote, is so that it makes it more difficult to create a district that includes properties that may not want to be included because there are already rentals. I mean, six out of seven is a pretty high standard for a vote to pass something if there's objections.
But as I understand it, then, not adding language to the ordinance now about nonconforming then presents, each time a district is proposed, the council has to address that issue each time, whereas if it was put into the language of the ordinance, that would not be an issue then, is that right? In other words, if it was put into the language of the ordinance that a existing rental that has four unrelated with a valid license can remain that way and will be conforming, if that language was put into the ordinance now, then it would not be necessary for the Plan Commission and the council every time to address the issue of a particular parcel in a particular proposed district as to whether or not you wanted to exempt that parcel. And it seems to me that if that parcel makes other parcels noncontiguous, then you've raised another whole question that wouldn't have to be addressed, if we address now the issue of conforming versus nonconforming.
Well, then what would it mean to be in the district?
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
What would it mean to be in the district if the particular property that you're referring to doesn't have to comply?
It would mean what has already been stated, which is that if it has an existing license, it may continue to be used that way even when it's sold. That's what it says.
Even if it's not licensed?
No, specifically, it says if it's licensed. If it's licensed, it can continue to be used in that way, and it's conforming. If it's not licensed, then it would have to follow the overlay district. I mean, that's the language that's in there now. It's nonconforming. If it's nonconforming, if it's currently used as a conforming rental license, then it should stay that way. This would say that it becomes nonconforming. And I don't understand why we want to make properties nonconforming when the object of the overlay district is specifically to look at the properties that are not rented to four unrelated and say, we want them to remain that way, or they can rent to two or a family. You know, that's the ordinance as we now have it. But the whole idea of making something nonconforming that is currently conforming, legally using the property, and now saying you're nonconforming, and that's just unfortunate for you that you ended up in the district, whereas 75 percent of the people or 100 percent of the people said they wanted to be in that district.
I don't know how you can have a district that has rules that say if you are, you either conform or you're not conform, and if you don't conform, you're still considered conforming. It just, that doesn't make any sense to me. It would seem easier to simply exclude them from the district.
Well, I think then, language needs to be put into the ordinance says, you may exclude yourself from the district. If the petition process starts and is going to the Plan Commission, then if you're saying, Brian, that the property owner simply has to come to the Plan Commission and says, I would like to be excluded.
I didn't say that.
Well, all right, if you're suggesting-
You are. I'm not suggesting.
Okay. Well, I'm asking then, what would the process be? What would the process be if I, if I was going to be a nonconforming property?
Keep it licensed.
You're suggesting there should be some other way to do that. I'm asking what the process is.
I don't think it had to do with the, what I hear Eileen say, doesn't have to do with the license. It doesn't, it has to do with the property owner's ability to retain the property if they have to refinance or something. That's what she's talking.
Or if it burns.
Or if it burns, or yeah, some. And so that brings up the question, let's just say I live on a street, or in everybody, I mean, if, if the property next to me on each side and the three, and the properties behind me all want to be in the district, can I be a donut hole and not be in the district?
As long as the other properties are contiguous.
We all know about the donut hole, so.
I think that's up to the city council.
I mean, can a, can the boundary be drawn so that, you know, all the way around, you know, one property or two properties, those two properties in the middle are not part of?
Nothing that prevents it that I can see in the ordinance.
This is the same as every other zoning district. If you had R3 all the way around your neighborhood, you could end up with that situation. It's completely up to the city council. There are a lot of probably R2 neighborhoods that are surrounded by single-family or multifamily surrounded by single-family.
No, I'm not talking about a neighborhood. I'm talking about one property. I'm one property on the street.
Yeah.
Can I, can, can this district be drawn all the way around me, 360 degrees, and I'm right in the middle, and I have four, I have a rental, and so when they bring in the boundary map, you know, it's like this, there's, it's all the way here, 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 but then it's here, 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 and just this piece is excluded? Do I have a right as that property owner to come in and say, I want to be excluded from that district?
If the council wants to approve a district like that, they could do that.
Yeah. But I think the answer to your question is, no, you don't have any way to enforce that. You can come and ask, but I don't think the ordinance allows an enforcement of that.
Which then makes me nonconforming.
Which isn't a problem with your license or selling it as long as you maintain your license. The only time it becomes a problem is when you need money and you need to go get money.
Right.
And so then you tie a property-
I'm not sure why we want to set that up that way. That's my question. Why would we want to force someone who's legally using the property with a rental license into a position where they become nonconforming? The example goes back to-
The theory behind it for nonconforming, I'm not suggesting that this is going to satisfy any objections, but the theory behind nonconforming uses is to allow them to continue until they reach a point either due to damage or deterioration or, you know, some kind of casualty. And then at that point, when the place is damaged to such an extent, then it must conform. So the idea behind nonconforming uses is to not deprive somebody presently of the use of their property, but then down the road, when the property gets rebuilt, to have it conform so that over time, nonconforming structures and uses are eliminated.
I understand all that, Brian, and I'll go back to the example of Jenner Towers, where it was not an issue until it became known to investors that it was nonconforming, at which point there was an issue with financing. And I ask, why are we putting into effect a district where that could happen to properties that are, you know, currently being used in a certain way?
And I think your comments are well-directed towards the council in terms of what they want to approve or not.
Okay, then we go back to the question. Can that language be added this evening?
I suppose that there could be language added that says, similar to what was done in the B1 district or B2 district, that said, if, you know, if this property is damaged, that it could be rebuilt within a year and the use could continue. I, I haven't really thought that through, but that's the, that was the, the thing that was done for the Jenner Tower and other downtown property issues. Joe, how does that?
Right. It, it, they're still nonconforming. We didn't change that. It just says that they would be allowed to be-
There, there is a mechanism by which they would no longer be nonconforming, and that is if the license lapses.
Correct.
At which point they would have to be conforming from then on.
Right.
And so it still satisfies that concern about conforming, but it puts someone who may be an investor in a position of having a rental property that they cannot rebuild properly or, or somehow recover their investment in it properly because they can't refinance or can't rebuild in that usage.
I guess my question then would be, could we table this and, and see if language can be inserted?
There's still-
I don't know if we can do that.
Sure you can.
Sure we can.
Unless we can figure out the language.
I know that. I understand that, John. I, I really thought that we could just insert language this evening, but.
Yeah, but we can do that when we come out of a public-
It's the city council that determines.
Yeah. We'll have to close the public hearing and then take any action, whatever it is.
The language is that the property owner should be able to request not to be in the district, period.
They can always do that. It's always up to the city council, how, who is included. You can rezone anybody anyway.
Well, then the whole issue of 75% or 100% is actually kind of not an issue because then it's just like, if these people come in and request a district, then you just draw it right there. And so there is no 75%. It would be assumed that it would always be 100%.
Well, you're, by doing the 75%, you're giving the residents the opportunity to apply for that rezone, but they can only apply for the rezone as a group. So that individual properties are not rezoned without, on their own.
I mean, the, the structure of the ordinance makes it fairly obvious that if you want to have it approved with a, a simple majority, that you make a district where 100% of the people agree. So, yeah, Steve, that would be easier.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What do you want to do?
Good question.
Wouldn't this issue, the nonconforming, conforming issue, have to go back to the original ordinance that we already approved? Because like Joe says, tonight we're talking about the petition process, petition process.
Except that the attorney has said that we could add language tonight about the conforming or nonconforming. It just said, it doesn't seem clear to me that the language is available.
What if you added language that said, a property that is destroyed by casualty-
Yeah, but we can still talk.
Uh, maybe rebuilt to the original use.
I don't know how that affects financing, though.
Well, sorry, but tha, that's basically what we did with the, the Jenner Towers property. That was the language that we modified. It gave them the ability to rebuild to the same use.
But it's still listed as nonconforming?
Yes.
You think that's true?
Hmm, that's what we're gonna, we just changed that zoning.
Want to table it and bring it back?
The city attorney is writing, maybe he has something for an answer.
City attorney's writing a note anticipating that you're about to table this and that you want this argument adjusted.
I thought you were working.
I would make the motion to table this until we can get language that addresses the issue of conforming versus nonconforming in a overlay district.
Okay. Motion, the second. It's nondebatable. Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLecky?
Yes.
Nick, Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Apologize to folks that came tonight hoping for action, that we still have to do some more tweaking, it appears, so. The next time won't be a public hearing. We have had that, so it'll just be a regular agenda. Next on the agenda tonight is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature and/or previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the 12, 13, 11 council meeting. B is the payment of bills. C, the financial report for December. D is appointments to boards and commissions tonight. Reconstituting the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee, Larry Trine, appointed to 6112. James Rosemeyer, 6113. Dean Feldman, 6114. Maynard Harrison, 6113. Melissa Gormly, 6114. Luanne Johnson, 6113. And the council representative remains, John Miller. Licenses one or two, and/or two years operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic, informed malt beverages and intoxicating liquors as indicated in your packet. And F is a permit to hang the 2012 UWP homecoming banner for October 14th to 202012. Are there any items on which you'd prefer separate discussion and action?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
The motion, the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any there were none submitted tonight. Item six is reports, committee reports. Water and Sewer Commission, DeLecky, Killian, Steiner?
No additions.
No.
Parks and Recreation Commission?
No additions.
Entree Gallery Board?
None.
Board of Zoning Appeals?
None.
Museum Board?
No.
Question. When is this meeting going to be as far as considering consolidation?
It looks like it'll be January 28th.
January 28th. Okay. That's a Saturday.
That's correct.
What time of day?
Um, we haven't set the time, but it would, specifically, but likely morning.
Who's, who set the date and time and?
The tourism commission.
Under reports, B, other reports. Item one is the city hall space needs and cost analysis from Southwest Design Associates. You have that in your packet, indicates the costs of a variety of potential renovations of city hall and other space needs. Two is the transfer-
I have a, I have a question. Is this going to be put on our agenda, or what are we doing with this report? I don't even remember that we talked about this report.
It's just a report. Would you like to have it on the agenda for approval, or what would you like to do with it?
Seems like if we, I assume we had to pay for this report. Is that correct?
I assume we did.
Yes. That report was generated as a result of a work session discussion regarding the redevelopment site of Pioneer Ford. At that point, the discussion was whether or not it would be advantageous for the city to partner in that redevelopment option or to remodel city hall. And it was a cost benefits analysis that says how much it would cost to remodel city hall. That report did cost money. We hired Southwest Design Associates. I believe the cost was around $5,000. This is also referenced, I noticed as I was handing out the document this evening, goal number five for your city manager was asked that I look at creating a price for remodeling the city hall. And this helps with that, with that goal and analysis.
So then the question I have is, are we going to have a work session? What, what are we going to do with this?
I think we're at some point. We had the report. I put it in here so you'd have access to it. I could have hidden it from you. That seemed intemperate. So I'm not sure what it is that's concerning you here. You got the information. We put it out so the public could see it, as well as you could see it. Item two under report, other reports, is the transportation and parking demand study from Delta III Engineering. We have the executive summary here. If you'd like to see the entire report, it's in the city clerk's office as well as at the library. Item three is the 2013 Staffing Plan Quarterly Progress Report, indicating where we're at and hopefully where we're headed. To this point, $62,000 of savings has been done as staffing has been rearranged. Item four is the UW Platfield Transportation and Parking Update. Item five is the December Airport Financial Report. Item six is the December Water and Sewer Expenditures and Revenues Report. Seven is the December City Attorney Itemized Statement. Eight is the Building Inspection Department Report. And nine is Department Progress Reports. Any items there for comments or otherwise?
I have a question on the progress reports. First one is city attorney, it says that city attorney conferred with police chief regarding furnishing police services to Roundtree Commons, which is the new dorm. And my question is, what does this mean? What services will city platfield provide to the dorm itself?
Was a general discussion-
Is that what you're doing?
It was a general discussion about how police services would be provided.
We were discussing about the possibility of drafting a memorandum of understanding with the university for the purpose of having campus police deliver police services to the Roundtree Commons. And we were trying to look into what legal considerations we had to be handling and whatnot.
So far, we've had two meetings, and I expect that those will continue until a memorandum of understanding is created for your approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Eileen?
I was just going back to the city hall space needs and cost analysis from Southwest Design Associates. I think we have a meeting scheduled in January with the chancellor. Is that correct?
Yes, at the next council meeting.
And I don't know if, I guess, again, to have a, a study done is great, and it's great to have the information, but I guess I'm just wondering at what point we're going to be using that information. Is that something that will be ongoing when we have further discussions with the university, or, I mean, to just have a study and not have any use for it?
Right. I, I would argue that it's, it's probably most relevant when you're considering whether or not you're going to participate in the development on Pioneer Ford, on that former site. As you begin to explore those options and partners with developers, you'll want to know what it would cost to remodel this space, so that you have some comparisons, some, some numbers to compare the new costs of a new facility with. So that's why it was created. When that conversation occurs, at this point, I don't think that the developer is prepared to continue that conversation for probably a couple more months. But since I had the information, I felt it was important to share it and get it out and give everybody a chance to read through it.
Thank you.
Anything else under those reports? Tonight under action items, item A is the Roundtree Commons Neighborhood Parking Plan. This is ordinance 12-02, amending the official traffic map, and ordinance 12-03, creating section 3920 parking, permit parking regulations, 3921 parking permits, 3950 per N1, three, excuse me, per N3, per NFG penalties enforcement, and amending section 1.10 scheduled cash deposits.
That's quite the mouthful.
Yeah. I'm running out of gas here.
This was a result of the city council's request for me to meet with the neighborhood to talk about parking, on-street parking around Roundtree Commons, which is the new residence hall on Chestnut Street. The map of the parking plan is here, if anyone wants to take a look at it now or after the meeting or, or at any time. And then the ordinance simply implements what's on the map. It also establishes the citations and the fees that could be incurred for someone not following the parking proposal. You'll see that the citations are a little bit steep. Let's see if I can find them real quick. I believe the first citation will be $50. So if you don't follow this regulation, you will be penalized. And the second offense would be $50 citation and towing. Your vehicle would then get towed. So you have the expense of the towing and the impounding, as well as the $50 ticket. So we're hoping that we don't have to tow very many vehicles, but perhaps after the first one or two is done, people will catch on. All in all, I think it was a very good process to come up with this ordinance. I appreciate meeting with the residents in that neighborhood, and I'm happy to present this to the city council.
Thank you.
When would this begin?
It's expected to be in full force as of June 1st, 2012. Staff still needs time to create the actual permit, mail out permits, and certainly to get up the signs. We're expecting probably 150 to 200 signs that'll have to go up as a result of this proposal.
When you say mail out the permits, will they be mailed out to the addresses, or will they be mailed out in the case of a non-owner occupied property? Will they be mailed to the owner or to the address?
The way the residents preferred it was two permits to each residential dwelling unit. And so they'll be mailed directly to the owner whose name is in the water bill. We felt using the water bill was a, a good way of getting the permits in the hands of the people who live there. They also asked that some type of consideration be given to landlords. And we're going to have to figure out some type of a landlord permit because we certainly want to encourage landlords to care for their properties, and we don't want to cite them for caring for their properties. If they're there, caring for them, we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to, to park on the street legally. So we're going to look into that a little bit further. People who are owner occupied residences, they will get two permits in the mail, and then they'll have the opportunity to apply for up to two more if they find that they are in need of additional parking.
Other questions?
I have a question. Marquee Avenue, north from the roundabout to Southwest Road, and Southwest Road, west from Longhorn Drive, are those still designated, I can't tell on this map, I'm assuming that those are still designated as no parking between 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM?
Yes.
In addition to being designated as permit parking or two-hour parking?
That's correct.
So those would be no parking in-
The overnight parking regulations would not be amended as a result of this ordinance.
Any other questions? We had a couple people that liked to speak tonight, as well as register Rita Steinbach and Dan Steinbach have both registered their support in favor of this. Charlie Bull would like to speak in favor, Michael Mayo, again, so if you two would please move toward the microphone. Charlie, you're first. Michael, you're second.
Charlie Bull, 735 Staley Avenue. I want to thank Larry for meeting with the neighbors in the community to help work out this plan. It truly was a neighborhood consensus that brought this together. And we did it to help control what are going to be parking issues once the residence hall is in full operation. I support the ordinance, but I asked the council to make a couple of clarifications with the ordinance. Maybe I'm wrong, I, I don't know, but I don't see anything in the ordinance that ensures us that residents of the residence hall will not be eligible for permits. All right? Maybe they're not eligible now because it's not like one of the no parking streets, or it is, or it isn't, I don't know. But I'd like it stated clearly that that 600-unit building that caused the need for these permits isn't eligible for any permits. Do we have a contingency plan? Should some entity build a structure that's not R1 or R2? Say it's a fourplex or an eightplex. Do we have some kind of assurances that they're not going to be able to flood the streets then with two parking permits per unit? Right now, it's R1, R2. We don't have a lot of those type of facilities there, although there's something underway- about a boarding house. But, I mean, what are we gonna do to make sure that we're not all of a sudden flooding the streets with other parking problems? This was designed to make sure there weren't any real changes for those people who already had properties there and businesses and going concerns. The ordinance seems to include procedures for overnight guests, but I'm not really sure there's anything that's really clear about what are we gonna do about daytime guests? Landlords, that was mentioned, you know, building tradespeople, things like that. I mean, are we gonna have to call in for guests? We'd just like that kinda clarified. And then if we are gonna allow overnight parking permits, most cities I've been in have a limit of how many days you can do that. There isn't anything in here. I would appreciate it if you could address that issue tonight before we do this. And I'll be as short as I've ever been. Thanks.
Charlie, excuse me, what was that last one again?
Are we... Can we put some kinda limit on the number of days a non-resident overnight guest can get a permit in a year? I mean, at some point, I guess I'll put it this way. As a landlord, I've ended up with more tenants, I'm sure we all have, those of us who own rental property, than what we anticipated. Yeah, no long-term overnight guest kinda thing. I mean, if the city has an ordinance saying, hey, you can only do this so many times in a given year, perhaps you can help landlords not have this. And then we don't have the permanent overnight guest parking on our streets.
So maybe under guest/visitor parking, just install a limit of 10 nights per year or something, that you can call in your guest. Is that what you were thinking?
I don't wanna venture a number. Cities I've been in were three consecutive nights.
Okay.
No more than three consecutive nights. And I believe they had some kinda limit, but I'm not, you know, total limit, but I'm not sure exactly what that is. I haven't fleshed it out. I leave it for you guys. I haven't talked to other members of the neighborhood to find out exactly what they'd wanna do, so I don't wanna pretend that I'm speaking for others. I just think it's something that I hope the council will consider.
Michael Mayo, 375 South Chestnut. When was this meeting with regards to the, you know, permit parking regulations and whatever had? I had no idea that it was going to be. I was waiting as I was here in council chambers when we said there was going to be another meeting, but nothing was sent to my house. And I live in that district.
Okay.
So, you know, here it is, something, again, that's been passed. A resident doesn't even know what's going on. A little upset about that. So, you know, where can I get a copy of the plan that's been set up? And I guess I'll have to come back and address any of my concerns at another time. I think it's great that a parking plan has been devised and penalties and enforcement's gonna be a bear for the chief, but that's to be something later on. Only other one comment I had, again, I noticed the meeting did not start with the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Council discussion?
So 3921 needs to be revised, is that correct? If we use some of these suggestions?
For the guest/visitor parking?
That Mr. Bull brought up.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
That's the decision you have to make, whether or not you wish to have it revised.
I think it's a good idea.
I think he has a number of good points.
Yeah.
Well, throw out a number. I'll throw out 10. How's that sound?
I like three.
Okay. At least I got a number.
Three nights for the year or three consecutive nights?
Three consecutive nights.
Did you wanna set a limit then on total number for the year?
About three consecutive 10 total.
Make a 12. All right, whatever.
12 total or 12 cumulative?
12 cumulative.
Or, I mean, if you had three guests, would they have a total of 12 each? Spread out over the year? I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
I think that this is a visitor's vehicle. The way this reads is any resident may, is permitted to call in a license plate number. So I think what I was assuming was that no more than three consecutive nights for that license plate number and no more than, I don't care if it's 10 or 12, for the year for that license plate number. That would seem to be that person.
And when is the year gonna start and stop?
The permits expire May 31st. I would recommend we follow the permits.
So it'll be between June 1st and May 31st.
If that's the only change, you could probably still approve it and make that as part of the motion.
I have a question about where it says use of resident permit. A resident of a dwelling may allow another resident of the same dwelling to use the resident parking permit. So is that assumed that that resident would use that parking? And does it say that the permit can only be used on the resident's car?
No, they have two permits and they can use it on any car. And any resident can use it.
Okay.
So if you only need one parking spot on the street, you can just take your resident permit and give it to your guest?
But you can't give it to somebody else?
Well...
Not supposed to.
You're not supposed to sell it.
In other words, if I got two, yeah, can I give it to my neighbor next door?
It addresses that somewhere in here.
To number three.
Number three. You may allow another resident of the same dwelling unit to use the resident parking permit. No person issued a resident parking permit may sell or allow an unauthorized person to use a resident parking permit.
And an unauthorized person is defined as?
I don't believe it's defined.
Someone who's not a resident.
So in that case, a guest could not use your permit?
I mean, strictly speaking, no. But it would...
I think one other thing here, too. We knew that when we produced this, that it was likely at some point we would come back and tweak it. And so I don't know that we wanna overanalyze this to death because it might well be, the tweaks we make have to be untweaked.
Right. No, I'm just trying to get a clear picture of what a resident can do with that permit.
The other question that was asked about the residence hall? Will that residence hall be giving permits?
The plan at this point is that it would not. Now, if you wish to add specific language, that it may not be applicable to any dwelling with more than two units, you're welcome to do that. I didn't put that in there. I suspect maybe the neighborhood wanted that.
And it turns out, any new construction, R3, whatever, would be required to meet the normal parking standards anyway. So they're gonna just be totally dumped on the street, so.
Do you have light? Do you have a place you would put that? You would suggest that it would go?
If the council wishes to add that, I thought it was an interesting question. I didn't know the answer. I don't know. Larry, do you feel that that's something that the residents?
Well, with the latest housing unit that's being considered, the boarding, the rooming house, thank you. Maybe that is something we need to look at because that is 10 people. What if there weren't parking? I guess I'm looking for a spot where it'd be best to put it.
3921, at the end of number of parking permits, which is 3920, period, say not including Round Tree Commons.
Or any unit of more than...
Or any R3s owned, or how would that be? If you're talking about a boarding house?
Or any unit greater than a duplex?
I don't know.
Any building with more than two units?
But does a boarding house have only one unit? It is ten people in one unit?
It's got a whole bunch of bedrooms.
Yeah, but that's not a unit.
There are some homes, including one that I own, that have three apartments in it, so I would not want to save.
Okay.
You know?
It's not very often we get to...
In that particular instance, they would be deprived of permits in the area where they're supposed to be allowed to receive them. So I'm not sure how that works. A boarding house, I guess, would be different because it's not a unit. I mean, it's one unit. I guess if you wanna look at it that way.
You could say not including dwellings classified as border, boarding houses or rooming houses.
Or institutional uses.
Wouldn't that go under number of permits? Because right now, it says annual resident parking permit shall be limited to two permits for each residential dwelling unit located on a street. So it seems to me that you would want to put any limitation within number one because here it says it's going to be limited to a residential dwelling unit.
Not Round Tree Commons, not rooming houses. What's the third one?
Not, well...
In there at the end of the first paragraph under number permits?
So you could say, do you call it a residence? What do you call that building? Do you call it a residence hall? I mean...
I called it Round Tree Commons. I originally said I named it, but...
I would just make it generic and say residence halls and rooming houses.
Just say residence halls, don't name it.
Residence halls and rooming houses located...
I just have this sense that we would not give 620 parking permits to Round Tree Halls. It would seem to defeat the purpose of the parking plan.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could beat this to death. I mean, why not just pass it to see if we have a problem? And then go back and address it?
I will make the first motion to approve ordinance 12-2 amending the official traffic map.
I'll second it. The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I have a clarification. Does this, this does not include anything about the overnight guests of three or anything like that?
It's not purple on yours, but it's purple on ours.
Okay. I'm sorry, the purple one.
Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're down to the second one.
Okay, I make a motion. We amend 3921 parent two to include a restriction that allows...
Stop. Go back and make a motion to approve it. We don't have anything to amend yet.
You have to make a motion to, okay.
We can make the motion with these changes and get it all at one.
So you want me to make a motion to approve this ordinance?
With amendments.
With...
Right, exactly.
With amendments. Okay.
What amendments you want?
Is that what you want me to do now?
I'm sorry, you were on a roll and I stopped you. I apologize. You can't amend something that's not on the floor. That's what I was trying to say.
Three consecutive days.
Three consecutive days for one license plate, no more than 12 consecu... 12 times for that license plate in a year. Second. Do you have to second vote? I mean, now do you wanna vote on that or what?
Was the motion to approve this ordinance with that change?
With amendments. That's the first one I put for.
That doesn't mean I'm not gonna suggest another one.
The motion is a second.
Second, to amend that 3921 parent two.
Jan, are you clear on this?
I have a motion and a second, and it's on parent, 39.21 parent two, adding the three consecutive days, or three consecutive nights, and no more than 12 times a year for a particular license plate.
That's correct. Okay. Maybe you'd like to amend the motion? Apparently, we don't. Okay, well, I didn't know if you wanna put in the residence hall and the other stuff or not.
Well, this is, I'm just doing 3921, too. That's guest and visitor parking. That doesn't mean I'm not gonna go back to 39 parent, 21 parent one. I thought, are we taking one at a time or multiples?
Okay. Anybody else on that one? Roll call vote on that one.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's stop while we're ahead. There's one more to go. Two out of three ain't bad, but let's do three out of three. Somebody moved to pass 3921.
Could you say on 3921, number one, that annual resident parking permit shall be limited to two permits for each single-family or duplex residential dwelling unit?
Or triplex.
Or triplex. Because there are some triplexes in this area, Brian, and I think the understanding was they would be included.
Okay, well, would that sort of solve this?
Are you making that motion?
I don't know if there are any fourplexes either.
We can always come back. Part of the confusion here is we have one sheet with one ordinance, but there are different sections the ordinance modifies. And so we did the first one. Can we do 3921, 3950 together here in one?
So I make a motion that we amend 3921 parent one to include the language as proposed by the city attorney. Annual resident parking permit shall be limited to two permits for each... Brian?
Single-family, comma, duplex, or triplex residential dwelling units.
Located on the street, then, okay. Second. These people second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Which one seconded?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now we have ordinance 12-04 amending the official traffic map. This is a different, no parking here to corner Washington Street.
Just a minute, don't we have to approve the whole thing yet?
Well, I thought you already did.
Well, we kinda went at it backwards, but let's go ahead and...
See, that's why I wanted one, that's why I wanted one motion because it says one document.
I know, I know. But we did it the way we did it.
But you chose to do it differently, it's okay.
Now, as fixed, adjusted...
We're done.
You need to approve the motion of the ordinance.
I make a motion, yeah, that we approve now ordinance 1203 as amended.
Each of the prior were amendments.
All right, I'll, whatever.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item B is ordinance 12-04 amending the official traffic map, no parking here to corner on Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Becker got there first. Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C tonight under action is ordinance 12-05 vending on city property to regulate off-premise sales of food and other goods. Council had requested city staff to research and submit a draft ordinance regarding street vending of food within the city. This is a second draft of that potential ordinance.
At our last meeting, I believe I was to wait until I got feedback, and at this point, I'll respond that I have not received any feedback.
Feedback from?
I believe the city council wanted time for individual council members to get in touch with me to request changes to the ordinance.
I have two concerns about it that were brought to my attention.
I, I have two concerns about it that were brought to my attention. One is whether it's even possible for people to get insurance as we require in the ordinance. And, uh, there seems to be some question whether such insurance even exists. If it can't be gotten, then it becomes a requirement that can't be satisfied, and I think we need to address that question. The other is, uh, why we would, for instance, not require people who sell baked goods or canned goods or other kinds of things at a farmer's market to meet the same requirements as they would if they were selling in other places. What justification would we regulate one and not the other?
I can speak to the insurance question. Uh, I'll tell you that, um, typically, insurance is offered for businesses. If you have a business that creates a product, uh, you can call an insurance agent and s- and purchase business insurance. Um, that will provide liability if, if your, if your business creates a faulty product. Uh, as particular to vending or selling food, um, I have not contacted any insurance agents looking for insurance. Uh, but many restaurants, I suspect, would have insurance. Um, I s- I don't know what the obstacle would be, other than maybe you need a place of business. And being a vendor, you wouldn't have a permanent location. So, to answer your questions particularly, I, I have not researched with insurance agents whether insurance is available. Um, you'll, you'll note under thirty-one point one-five, subparagraph B two, it specifically references the farmer's market, which, uh, obviously, Mr. DeLucky raised. If you hold a farmer's market, you're required to get permission from the city council. Now, that's for the farmer's market in general. That's not individual vendors selling food. So, if the city council wants individual vendors licensed at the farmer's market, um, we could certainly do that. At this point, that question had not been raised, and we're trying to answer your requests for an ordinance.
So, the farmer's market, they have a license as a whole, but not the individual vendors there? I thought that they were each licensed.
Jan, maybe you could clarify this, but I'm reading section B two that says a person participating in a farmer's market who is selling only, only items that are grown or produced by the seller or the seller's immediate family, um, is not required to have a permit. Farmer's markets in public parks or city streets require the consent of the city council or the common council.
Correct. Right now, they just get the permission of the city council. Comes in every spring and the council approves it.
Okay, then I guess I would ask this question. Would somebody who would otherwise be regulated for selling food on Second Street be able to sell without a permit or a license if they were in the farmer's market?
Under your proposed ordinance, yes. If you would like to tweak this ordinance, we can certainly do that at your request.
I'm just pointing out something that seems inconsistent. Other discussion?
Because this, this, uh, ordinance was really specifically looking at off-premises sale of prepare, of re- of restaurant-type food is what it. I think, I mean, it says off-premise sale of food and other goods, but I think that probably most of us here thought it was looking at off, you know, like outside sale of restaurant-type food, burgers, whatever. Not jams and jellies and cucumbers.
It's true.
No, there's no hot food.
Dan, Dan Shields has indicated she'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance. Dan, would you please?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Zan Shields, sixty-five Mitchell Avenue. I have, uh, researched, uh, insurance. I called, uh, Tricor Insurance, American Family, and State Farm Insurance. And they informed me that there was no such insurance. Not at all. As a matter of fact, uh, American Family tried to find someone to underwrite that sort of insurance with no such luck. And then also, there was something else in the ordinance about being, um, fixated to one location as a street vendor. We would like to have the freedom to move around, like maybe also at the farmer's market. We had also looked at that and had permission to go into farmer's market, and we would like to have, be able to use a permit to do that also.
Good.
Thank you.
Have, have we, did we contact any other cities to find out if they have similar provisions like this? For example, I'm thinking that obviously in Madison, I mean, we've got vendors all over the place. Not only at football and basketball events, but Saturday afternoon walking, walking around the campus. They must have some type of regulations, I assume, licensing requirements, I would believe for those. And I'm wondering if we should, at this point in time, contact that and find out what they do in Madison before we pass this. That seems, go ahead, chief.
When I drafted this ordinance, I consulted with Madison's website, and this is very, very minute compared to what they require. You wade through tons of data on their website in order to comply, and they are much, much more restrictive than what we've, um, got in place or proposed here. What I did was consult with, uh, the Village of Mont Horrups, uh, vendor ordinance, and then I also borrowed heavily from, uh, ordinance in Dodgeville. That's where I got the insurance rates and whatnot. And so, the other cities do regulate it. It's entirely up to the city council what objectives you'd like to accomplish with it. And that's, I tried to throw out a starting point, and I was hopeful that you folks would have some input or guidance about how to proceed with it. I'm not fully pleased with what's in here. I mean, it's a finished product.
Do you know, Doug, in Madison, do they, do the vendors pay for their license? Do you know how much?
Boy, I don't recall it.
Is that minimal?
It's not a real user-friendly, uh, process in, in my eyes. I mean, it was very complex. And some of it had to do with where people are gonna actually be doing their vending. I mean, there are some coveted spots apparently on State Street that people basically have to jump through a lot of tiny, tiny little hoops to get the right to be able to vend in that area. I don't know, you know, beyond that, it didn't seem applicable to what, um, I got the idea that you folks were willing or wanted to accomplish with, uh, an ordinance of this nature. So, I didn't delve real deeply into what they have.
Okay. Did they differentiate, say during time of day?
I don't even recall.
Yeah, these are things we probably.
Ed White has asked to speak also on this topic. Ed, please come forward.
Ed, I would be hopeful that if we could get a little bit more guidance or cooperation, maybe from the, um, local, uh, from the state in this realm. They might be able to accomplish a lot of what we are seeking to accomplish, but we are not getting a whole lot of support in terms of enforcement from them. And that might even preclude the ability, or the need to have an ordinance of this nature.
Ed?
Uh, Ed White, twelve sixty-five North Elm. Um, just in general information, sitting in the back of the room, my experience with, um, the J.C. brat stands, nonprofits, uh, that type of thing. You're talking kind of similar stuff. Uh, I know when we were doing that, that, uh, it's really becomes a, I'm assuming you're talking about food safety and health issues, which obviously there are state regulations that say when and where you can do that stuff and the type of facilities you have to have. If I remember correctly, nonprofits can only do that like four times a year, uh, without having a license. And once you get licensed, then that's a state issue. Um, I don't know if any of that's been considered in this. We have mobile vendors all over the place. Uh, Bill Moody, for instance, before he sold his thing, these are mobile popcorn stands and, and cotton candy stands. Um, they have to be licensed, um, and they can get insurance. We've required it, um, for dairy days and other events. So, there's got to be insurance out there somewhere. You're probably not gonna find it at State Farm or American Family. There are specialty companies. And maybe they just haven't found the right one, but, you know, I would certainly suspect if we connected with, um, Millie Faith, for instance, still runs one. I'm sure she's got insurance, uh, through a carrier somewhere that does that type of event, or, you know, it's, it would be considered events, I suppose. So, I don't think any of these are beyond what you need to do. And I would think there's a difference between farmer's markets where it's prepared food somewhere and you're bringing it, and it's not open food, open containers. You know, it's processed and packaged food, or it's raw food, uh, in, in referen- you know, versus a casual dish or a even brats and burgers. And I, you know, it comes down to amount of times you're doing it. Is it business? If it's a business, you can get insurance. If it's not, then you can't do it that often, and it's not an issue. So.
Thank you. Table, is what we're looking to do further?
I think it's worth voting on myself. I've made, I, I think it's a good, I think this is what we wanted. The question of insurance, I've, we want a table for insurance, but it, I, what Ed said, for example, I think, I think insurance is out there. I'll make a motion to approve it as, as it stands.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. We have a roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Uh, no.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is item D under action, job description for the communications specialist position.
The city council, um, budgeted for this position for two thousand and twelve. Uh, the job description needs city council approval. If the city council approves the job description, then we will go forward with hiring for the position.
Most new group?
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
I don't believe this is the appropriate time to, uh, pass this. Uh, we've asked the city workers to cut back to thirty-seven hours. The staff has not cut back. When we look at this, this person is supposedly budgeted for, um, a salary around forty thousand dollars. With benefits, it comes up to sixty-three thousand dollars if we start in the second quarter. It still comes out to be about forty-seven thousand dollars. Now, the savings as far as what the workers have given up is a hundred and nine thousand dollars. So, here we have forty-seven thousand dollars going to a new position, and so I don't agree with this being done at this time. When economic conditions improve and when the hours go back to forty hours per week, I'd be willing to vote for this. Thank you.
Yes. Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
No.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E under action is the Platteville Community Area Network Association Agreement, the P-CAN agreement.
This is a partnership with UW Platteville and UW, excuse me, UW Platteville and the Platteville Area School District. Uh, the city, uh, several years, several years ago, applied for a grant with these two districts, um, to help put in broadband communications throughout the city. Um, this agreement formalizes that relationship, uh, in an effort to create a, a, a structure for this organization. Uh, after this agenda item is also the bylaws for that organization. Uh, this, um, the representatives of each of those jurisdictions have reviewed and approved the agreement and the bylaws, and each of the jurisdiction boards are now gonna be looking at the agreement and the bylaws, um, and we seek your approval on those.
And although this may be just jumping ahead to the next agenda item, um, I would like to request an amendment. Slight revision to page seven of the bylaws, article seven, section two, supplementary benefits. It, it starts out, the association shall, and I would request the word shall be deleted and may inserted. In essence, the discretion, uh, the association would have discretion as to whether or not to purchase supplementary insurance benefits for, uh, in de- for protection of EC officers or members. I say EC, it's the executive committee, the governing body of this, uh, unincorporated association.
That's the second item.
Yeah, that's correct. If this agreement is approved tonight, uh, the city council will be asked at some point in the future to appoint two representatives to this body.
Who would then serve on the, what is called the EC or executive committee.
Brian, as you look at that, you said you would like it to say the association may, but doesn't, isn't that then language that conflicts with something that, at the beginning of it, that says mandatory indemnification?
No, it doesn't conflict with it.
That doesn't conflict with, that, that language wouldn't conflict, okay?
No, it would not. The, the shall, uh, as it rea- as it reads now, the indemnification is mandatory under certain circumstances. The insurance provision is also mandatory, but the, the work of various members of the group in terms of looking into insurance coverage that's available versus the cost that they wanna pay, they're not gonna purchase that insurance coverage. So, if the documentation says shall, but it's not gonna be purchased at this time, that's a conflict. We should make the document conform with what's gonna at least initially happen.
You have a motion for the first one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ken got there first. This is a motion to approve the P-CAN agreement. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F is the Platteville Community Area Network Association bylaws, the one we just had a request to revise by changing shall to may.
I'd, I'd also like to point out that there were several, uh, typos in the draft you received electronically, and therefore, there's a paper copy in white, uh, on your desk, uh, this evening with those typos fixed.
Motion to approve as, uh, noted with changing shall to may.
Second.
The motion is a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item G is resolution twelve dash oh-one adopting the proposed sick bank time provision.
This was discussed at our last meeting as part of the handbook approval. Um, at that time, the handbook was approved without the sick time provisions. Uh, after our approval, we had a work session where we discussed the sick time provisions proposed in the handbook. And at that time, the city council led me to believe that perhaps you're ready to look at approving something for the sick time policy. And, um, uh, I believe at the time, it was discussed that you were interested in approving what was proposed. So, that's on your agenda for this evening. Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
DeLucky?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item H under action tonight is the water and sewer expenses for TIF districts.
Uh, this has been discussed by the city council at a, a couple of previous meetings. Um, very briefly, uh, uh, the information provided at past meetings is in your packet. Um, basically, the Water and Sewer Commission is asking the city council to consider paying for water and sewer expenses that are eligible under the TIF district plans. If you refer to the handouts, we updated one of them because, uh, several council members had expressed a, an interest to look at what the picture would be without TIF three or TIF eight included in the, uh, financial numbers. So, one, one copy of that spreadsheet will say revised at the top, and, and that one does not include TIF three or TIF eight. Um, so it changes the numbers a little bit. Um, I know initially, um, what, what we did as staff as a result of that request was we took a look at. I know initially, um, what, what we did as staff as a result of that request was we took a look at how much would it impact the average water user? If we, if you approved this with all of the TIDs, we would expect an eleven percent decrease or approximately two dollars per month on the average water bill. Obviously, the flip side to that is that the TIFs would remain open for longer. Thereby, the tax base would not go onto the tax rolls as quickly. If we took TIF district number three and TIF district number eight out of the analysis, that would mean a seven percent decrease in utility rates or a one dollar and twenty-two cent per month on average for the average water or sewer bill. Now, these figures are based on both estimates and assumptions. So, we're trying to be approximate here, and at this point, we can't give you a, an exact number. But based on our estimates, this is what we're coming up with. So, I, I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're, this number is not a solid number. It's, it's our best guess at what the impact could be.
And that, and, and it would only impact the water bill, not the sewer bill?
Uh, no, water and sewer total. That's-
That's the total impact on water and sewer?
Yes, that's correct. Please keep in mind that as the water and sewer rates have risen recently, most of the, a lot of the water expense has been because of the water garage, the well, and the water tower that have recently been built. The garage and the well are still under construction, and, and obviously, when they're finished, that'll be a part of the increase as well.
Another increase.
Yeah. I have one other point that I should bring up. Mr. Borgin, the finance director, has brought to my attention. We've been discussing the idea of closing TIF district number three in the past, and it is on schedule to be closed this summer. We anticipate that there will be, um, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars approximately of revenue from TIF three. If you took the water and sewer expenses recommended in this handout, out of that, that would be another a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars out of the hundred and eighty-two. So, we could close TIF three, and instead of returning a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to the taxing jurisdictions, we could pay the water and sewer the hundred and eighteen and still return money back to the taxing jurisdictions. So, what I'm telling you is, if you look at TIF three independently, you could pay for the water and sewer projects in that TIF and still close out the TIF in 2012 and still return money to the taxing jurisdictions. The difference, of course, would be the amount of money that gets returned to the jurisdictions. And I do have a handout for that. If you'd like, I could hand that out.
When does TIF eight close?
Duane, can you help me with that?
Uh, TIF eight won't be for two or three years yet.
Couple more years.
It's several years yet.
Duane, I thought TIF eight was five years. It'd be a couple more years than that. It'd get approved in 2006.
Well, I think the first couple of years, there wasn't any assessment on the property. They had the demolition, and then there was a partial, and then finally got going. So, there were two or three years before it became full. So, I mean, I can give you the, the information on that if you want.
So, you approve a TIF for five years, but if it doesn't make any money, you automatically extend it for eight years? Is that what you do with TIFs?
What I'm saying is, I think when you approved it, it was based upon like five years of, of a full valuation. First couple, two or three years, it was, there was a demolition that took place, and then there's a partial assessment, and then the full assessment took place. So, if you go back and look at the original proposal, it'll probably show that there's like five years of, of the full growth, full value, rather than just like partials and then the full later on, so.
Okay. When you create a TIF, you don't, you don't set a sunset date in it? You don't say it will close in five years? You say it will close as soon as the money is paid back that it was borrowed to improve the TIF.
Now, Ed, that's one thing. You just said TIF eight was not going to be closing. It says in here, "TIF eight will be closing in 2011." That was my understanding. That's the North Elm Street project, is it not?
Right. You mean TIF three?
I heard, I heard an eight in there somewhere.
TIF three closes in 2012.
This year.
And TIF eight?
TIF three.
When does TIF eight closing is, is what I'm asking.
Well, probably, I don't have that information exactly right now, but, because we don't have, we're getting evaluations, but it's probably like two or three years down the road yet. This, this, I'm talking about TIF three here. Basically, if everything goes as planned this year, and it should be pretty accurate, it'd be about a hundred and eighteen thousand balance here. And the amount that the water and sewer department is, as is like a hundred thousand, I believe it was. But it'd still be about eighteen thousand, yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't put this plan together, but this says, yeah, it will be closing, but several years down the road, it isn't ready to close yet. We still have to pay off some loans and everything, so. TIF three is what this information here is about. And the second page, you can see it was, uh, the original, um, plan for the construction includes the water mains sewer and sanitary sewers for phase one and phase two construction. And that's basically, they extended what is mains, drive, I believe, and that was part of the, basically, the second construction phase or so.
Does anybody have questions about the two pages that were handed out as a result of Duane's analysis? If, if you want to look at the documents in your packet next, I can refer to, I, I see on the packet where it references "TIF eight will be closing." We put in the revised handout, and when we revised it, I asked staff to take out TIF eight and TIF three, and that analysis was added. They wrote "will be closing" as justification for why it's not included in the analysis. The message I had given to staff was that if we allow TIF eight and TIF three to close and focus on the other TIFs, what does the picture look like? So, staff took it, staff wrote it down as a discussion as justifying it to anyone reading it, saying that TIF eight is closing or TIF three is closing. I don't believe that was intended to mean that TIF eight would be closed in 2011.
This page that you handed, is this from the original nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven time period?
Right, this is part of the original, um, TIF document. And I just thought I would show on there that, that the water and sewer and sanitary sewer are allowable costs, and I'm sure they were when it first started. And this is what the council backed nineteen eighty-seven or eighty-six, I'm not sure what year was adopted. It was part of the overall document to do. So, I'm just saying that you can justify these expenses that it is, because it was part of the original document.
That's, that's pretty standard language. I think you'll find that in all of the TIF project plans. Now, whether or not you choose to follow that is up to you. It's there in case you decide to do that.
And the issue is that in eighty-seven, eighty-eight, and eighty-nine, we didn't do that, even though it was allowable, we didn't. We didn't. We paid for it out of general fund.
I believe back then, it was paid out, I think-
It was paid out of-
Yeah, this, the question here is more current expenses that took place in, I believe it was 2008, when they extended mains drive, and there were some water and sewer expenses incurred along with the city construction costs. And the question is whether those expenses are allowable.
Whether they should have been paid for by the water and sewer utility, or whether they should have been allowable expenses within the TIF.
Right, currently, the water and sewer utility paid for them.
Paid for them.
But they'd like it reimbursed if the funds are available, so.
Your pleasure.
What, what do our water and sewer commissioners?
I think we should pass it going forward.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Going forward?
Not retroactive, but going forward.
Prove it as stated here.
Two thousand six to two thousand ten.
Yes.
Steve, I'm not sure what your motion is.
Is your motion-
It's probably indicated by the lack of a second.
Well, it doesn't make any difference.
Is the motion to follow the water and sewer commission's request at reimbursement?
Yes, it is.
To follow the water and sewer.
They recommended paying the water and sewer utility bill out of the TIF districts on, that's what I-
That's your motion.
That's my motion, to follow the recommendation.
Of the water and sewer commission.
Are, are you going to exclude any of the TIF?
No.
Well.
Well, what-
It would be for one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and nineteen cents, right?
Right. As stated.
Expenses from 2006 to 2010. Nothing else. Not going forward from 2010, not going prior to 2006. I'll second the motion.
The motion is second. That money just get doled out to the water and sewer, sewer commission as the TIF produces excess revenues?
That's what would happen.
We'd have to borrow.
No, that's what's, that's what would happen.
Okay.
I just want to confirm that that motion includes the TIF eight that was discussed previously. It's at everything, right?
That means it extends the life of TIF eight.
Okay.
Well, as the motion was, as I understand it, I'm going to vote against it for, for that reason. We agreed, uh, as we asked the school district and county to approve an extension in addition of, of TIF revenues, that we were going to let these close out. And, uh, and we promised them that. We said we would do that.
On which, TIF eight?
Eight and three.
Eight and three. I amend the motion to exclude TIF three and eight.
Okay, let's do that. Take, make it a motion, amend it.
He did.
I'll second it. Three and eight's out.
Yeah, motion is second, well, not yet, it's not, and we have to vote.
That's the amendment.
Order the amendment.
Yeah. With a motion and a second to amend the original motion to remove TIFs three and eight.
Just a clarification, so that not, not extends three and eight. Well, even if you, number three would not be extended even if the water and sewer part was paid. It's all been closed out in 2012 either way. Either the water and sewer is paid, or else this money is, is sent back to the county and state and VOTEC. Their school and VOTEC, so. One way or another, it's going to be, you know.
Okay, well, and, and that's the thing, is we promised them that we would do that, and I-
Right, you talked about not extending it. It's not going to extend it. It may extend eight, I don't know.
We could exclude eight.
Based, based on your motion, I think that's what your intent is, to keep three in, but extend eight. To take eight out of your analysis.
Let's see, it says extend eight.
So, his amendment, and his amendment to the motion was to extend TIF eight? Or to take it out and saying they're-
Take it out and therefore not extend it.
Not extend.
Great.
Thank you.
But he also included TIF three, which would not be impacted with the extension, right?
Right. Would there be any harm to us if we tabled this motion tonight? Is there any time-related issue we have to deal with tonight?
No, I, I don't believe so. I can, I can-
I'm not a hundred percent convinced I know at this point what it is I'd even be voting on.
I, I can-
I've got a feeling there's about twelve people out there that feel the same way.
From staff standpoint, I would recommend that three, if you're going to do this, you not take three out. Because three is not going to get an extended life by taking it, by including it. It's going to close this summer, no matter what. The difference is, do you return the money to the other taxing jurisdictions? Or do you keep it and give your utility-
A break.
More money?
Okay, we have a-
Three.
We have a motion to amend the original motion. Jan, would you read that back, please?
The motion to amend excludes TIF eight from the original motion. The original motion was to recommend paying the water and sewer utility out of the TIF districts.
TIF districts.
Two thousand six.
So, and that motion would have extended eight, except for the amendment.
Would it be okay if you, everyone agreed just to, to say, and we're going to withdraw all our motions in seconds, and let's just have a clean motion that can be seconded, so that you understand what it is you're voting on, because I don't.
The only urgency one this year is if it is number three this year. So, I mean, if you just want to pass three, then work on the other ones later on.
I think we're close. I think we're close.
So, you're saying, Brian, we can withdraw our motions?
Yes. It sounds to me like you would avoid some confusion if you just kind of started over.
Once a motion is made, seconded, belongs to the body, is it okay to withdraw the motion to amend? Is there an objection to that? Okay. Motioner is second, or it's okay? What about the original motion? Is it okay to withdraw that one?
Let's just all vote no.
That's how I was going to vote. Okay, apparently, it's okay to withdraw that. Do you want to try again, Steve, with the?
I don't know if I really do.
I'll make a motion to adopt the utility commission's recommendation to pay the water and sewer utility out of TIF districts, except for the charges that were attributed to TIF eight.
Period. Second.
The motion is second. Okay, any discussion? Probably should vote in a hurry, huh?
Quickly.
Roll call vote, please.
Miller?
No.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to information and discussion items tonight, these are listed just to give us an opportunity to speak about them, or discuss them, or whatever. They're things that we expect at some point to come up. Item A is ordinance amending section three point twenty-nine B, the property to be disposed of regarding disposition of abandoned property. The police department apparently has some abandoned property they'd like to donate to charitable enterprises, and this would allow them to do that. Item B is conditional use permit for six fifteen South Chestnut Street. This is the rooming house and parking lot. It's the former bakery and former nursery on Chestnut Street, just up from the residence hall. Last night, that was, uh, approved by the Plan Commission. Joe was at twelve or fifteen spots, I can't recall.
Yeah, essentially, they approved the concept of the rooming house, but they didn't like the extra parking being rented out, so they said maximum fifteen spaces for use by the tenants and guests of the rooming house. And there were some other conditions as well.
They were going to come back to the planning commission with some, uh-
Site plan and landscaping plan.
Right. Landscaping. Charlie Bull and Jeff Becker would like to speak on that, and Michael Mayo as well, so if you three would move to the microphone.
The rooming house?
What's that?
I thought I was talking on the rental tree parking.
I may have screwed that up, Jeff.
It's okay. It's approved. That's one we want.
Okay, I apologize. I had you in the wrong pile here. I apologize. Now, I understand why you were. Be the last time I ever make a mistake, I'm sure.
Charlie Bull, Staley Avenue. Kudos to the Plan Commission for putting a stop to the concept of renting parking spaces. Yeah, and I'm really crazy about the idea of a boarding house, rooming house, whatever we're going to call it. Not per se in favor of that, but I am really against the idea of having landlords divide up their lots and renting parking stalls. With the permitted parking, I could just see it now. I own a couple of rental units down there. Let's see, rent seven hundred dollars a month, an extra hundred dollars a month for parking. Oh, you don't want to pay the extra hundred dollars a month? Here, here's your parking permit. I'll rent your space out. I'd really hate to see that happen. Be nice for me, I'd pay my house off a lot faster. But I really, I, I think we need to do something about this concept of renting parking spaces out to people. Thanks to the Plan Commission for seeing a flaw in that and limiting that. I really appreciate that. Kind of changed what I was going to talk about.
Michael Mayo?
I, uh, Michael Mayo, three seventy-five South Chestnut. Personally, I'm opposed to having a boarding house so close to the residence hall. You know, we don't know who we're going to attract, or what we're going to attract at a boarding house, how many transient people we're going to have. And with the six hundred and plus students that we're going to have in there, what's going to happen to them at night? All right, we'll have parking, which is, you know- All right, we'll have parking, which is, you know, unbelievable, that we're getting a building put up, we're planning a building with parking. That's a, kudos to whoever decided to make sure that that happened. But a boarding house in that particular area with the student population that you're going to have, and the mix of male and female, I think it's a bad idea.
Any other comments on that item? Don't go away, Michael, you're next up again.
Do we have rooming houses and other ones? How many are there, do you know?
Several.
Several.
Many, most of the duplex, or the sororities, fraternities are rooming houses, and we have additional rooming houses that are not classified as such. I think they, they used to be fairly common back in the 70s, and we have a lot of them that are kind of continuing from those.
Did I understand that, is this going back to the plan commission before it comes to us? Or does it come to us for action at the next meeting?
They want, the plan commission wants to take another look at the site plan, landscaping plan, but the, the approval of the rooming house will be coming forward. So it's basically going to be approved in two steps, the, the rooming house, and then the site plan will be coming forward.
The planning commission approved the rooming house.
Okay.
Only thing they want, they're looking at is the parking, the landscaping, and that.
Anything else on that? Item C is a conditional use permit for 390 North Chestnut Street. This is to convert the old sign shop to a place where they do electronic waste recycling. They would do a variety of recycling computers, printers, television, excuse me, computers, printers, cellphones, that kind of stuff. They disassemble the electronics and recycle the parts. That businesses expected to have three to five full-time employees, possibly some additional part-time employees, and so on. Questions or comments on that?
Is this approved with any limitations, or?
The limitations were that they had to meet all state and federal requirements for.
Yeah, the, the, the two conditions in the staff report, plus an additional one that they had to, DNR and EPA permits. I would mention, staff still has some concerns about, basically, the chemicals that are used here. We're considering, I guess, or would like to suggest for your consideration, additional condition that maybe we provide a, basically, an annual review of this use, so that we have some ability to take a look at this when they're up and running, to make sure there aren't any issues with the chemicals that are being used there.
What would the fire department's semi-annual review look at? Would they look at any of that?
We talked about that last night. Normally, we do twice-a-year inspection on businesses. Being as we have a business that has this type of material that they use and store, we can increase the number of times that we're there, from two to four, or six, or, you know, so as far as any fires, you know, safety to employees and the public, and the public going by there on Highway 81.
I guess I was thinking more about, do you look at the storage of the chemicals at all, as part of your semi-annual inspection? I wasn't looking at increasing it more what you, what you inspect.
That is part of it.
I, I mean, if they're already doing it, I don't know why we would.
I don't think having it inspected more often than normal would be a bad thing.
Well, you're, you're very close to the, the limit on threshold quantity of, of chemicals there. It's 1,000 pounds, and it was nice having the applicants come in and state that they're going to be about 60 gallons of the sulfuric acid a month. And that equates out to just under 920 pounds, so they're pretty close. It's 15.75 pounds per gallon.
Is it really?
Yeah. It doesn't take very much. And I guess that's the reason why it, it's not a bad idea for, for us to maybe frequent that, to, like I said, for safety of the employees there, safety of the public that have to go there. And/or, like I said, you're right on a highway, you're, the church, the school, the nursing home. It's a small building.
We did ask them also about emissions, if there are going to be any. And the, what they explained was they would go through some scrubbers, at least two, as I recall.
Correct.
I'd like to see the inspections upped a little bit.
Lot quarterly.
At least initially find out how this is working, and make sure that we're on top of it.
To make sure that, what I heard Joe say was, he was also suggesting, in addition to more frequent or increased inspections, that the approval, the conditional use permit be given for a period of time subject to being brought back to reexamine.
I guess, I was kind of thinking of the asphalt plant in the quarry we do every year. Whether we would want to consider that type of an approval? So that we have the ability, if, if we have some issues, that it's not approved going forward.
Good idea.
Good point.
Because that is the question, so you go and inspect more often, and there's problems. What, what are the consequences?
Well, if they're not compliant, they could be closed.
How long does that take, court order?
It could take too long.
Court order, or?
A few months.
Yeah.
A fire inspector cannot shut them down if something's wrong or unsafe?
Uh, yes, he can.
Okay, so it could be done immediately?
Correct. If it's life-threatening, or, you know, health, well-being, yeah.
Michael Mayo is asked to comment on this as well.
With all those chemicals there, is there a vent, a venting a hood to get rid of the fumes? Or, it seems like a lot of chemicals.
Then, my understanding of how they process the, the chemical there, it's actually an enclosed piece of equipment. And they're using very small, small quantities of this at one time, thank goodness. But you do have fumes that are generated off of this, and that's what the, the air scrubbers or the chemical scrubbers are for. How that's going to be vented out of that building, I don't know that yet, I haven't seen how they're going to do that.
I think they indicated last night that there already is an air vent out the back. Does that ring a bell with either Joe or?
Yeah, he mentioned that the building basically is easily able to accommodate that, but the equipment that they are talking about is not in place.
My, my question is, they're going to vent, but they're going to vent what? They might be venting sulfur dioxide, which is not something you want to be breathing, putting it out into the air. I used to work with that. Another one is hydrochloric acid. So what, just to vent out into the surrounding area, I don't think is a good idea. So how are they going to, are they going to scrub the air to prevent these fumes from going out?
That's what they indicated last night.
Okay. I'd like to find out how they're going to do it.
How are we going to do that in the air quality, and the pollutants that are going to go out? Is this going to hazardous waste, Dave, at all, or is this considered hazardous waste?
The fumes, I, I don't know how you would, unless they had some way of monitoring that. As far as solids and liquids, you know, the storage, I guess that was a concern as well. That's, like I said, a lot easier for us to, you know, observe and monitor.
I mean, you're going to be putting fumes into a neighborhood?
Well.
Potentially, but like I said, with the equipment they have, you know, like I said, they're, you know, with the, the scrubbers, that's supposed to be either be eliminated or, or minimized to the point where it's acceptable.
So they're going to meet the EPA and the DNR standards, right, Joe, according to your email?
But that was a condition that the plan commission suggested. I don't know what those requirements are as far as needing to be.
We're going to need to know those to approve the conditional use permit, right? And that they're going to meet them?
It should be part of like their DNR and, you know, application and permit on that.
Okay.
Michael Mayo have a chance to speak?
Okay, my other concern is the traffic in that particular area. You've got all these chemicals, you've got the potential of an accident, a fire with the chemicals, with the chemical, the air that's contaminated in that particular area. I don't want to be the person that lives around in that, in that vicinity. I have seen a tanker truck with gasoline run into a train, and I know what, what ensued after that. And I was a public information officer of the town that I lived in at that time, and I had to see the driver pulled out. It was not a pretty scene. And with any, with the traffic that's in that particular area, all we need is an accident, and we're going to have some, you know, very serious conditions there.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
My, I did have a question. Does Specialty Disposal Processing LLC, does this company have other, is this the, is this their first or only facility? Do they have facilities in other communities?
This is essentially a startup business. They, they do have a chemist that they were employing, has got 18 years of similar experience, but it's for a different company. This particular company is a startup.
Joe, I want to ask one thing that was bugging me a little bit last night is, is would you ask them to provide us the resume and credentials of the chemist?
Sure.
Since they told us that they have a chemist who's got 18 years' experience, I'd like to know what that means, and I'd like to know what credentials makes them qualified to do this.
Along with that, too, is, is places like this are supposed to have a, an emergency preparedness plan, in case they do have issues. You know, and that's all part of, like I said, the, the DNR, the state registration for recycling electronics, or it should be.
Anything else? Item D is the downtown design standards. This was gone through as a, a, a long-term process of describing what design standards should be used for development downtown. My understanding is this also went through historic preservation, they made some, some modifications to it, and then brought it back, and then the plan commission approved this last night. Item E is a PUD amendment for Washington Place Apartments. They've asked to go back to the original color scheme that was modified during the PUD process.
Did they give a reason why they're going back?
They like them better?
And item F is committee consolidation. This was put back on just so we had an opportunity to talk about it, should that be desirable.
Can we, out of this committee, yeah, committee consolidation, can we pull items out and do it as individual, instead of trying to combine all of them together? I would like to see the ordinance of repealing and recreating the room tax as a committee instead of commission? Can we do that separately and have it put on the agenda?
You mean the tourism commission?
Yes.
Okay.
And then if the other three want to stay together, they can have their meeting on the 28th and discuss it.
Are you suggesting that the tourism commission, that committee, commission now would re, become a tourism committee and would be, would stand alone?
Correct.
Stand alone as a committee.
Stand alone as a committee.
Isn't that going to be part of the discussion on the 28th?
Right.
I think this is premature.
Well, we certainly could pull an ordinance out and have it available for inspection.
In this meeting on the 28th, is there going to be a facilitator there? And who is that?
That's what we're working to finalize.
What is the meeting on the 28th?
This is a meeting of the museum board, the arts committee, and the tourism commission.
And have all those people been informed about it?
No, because we are still getting the time.
Okay, all right.
We hope to have it done by the end of the week, we had a few issues.
Okay, on that. Next item is we're going to close session. We will return to open session to discuss the rental code, chapter 33, after the closed session. Somebody like to make a motion that we go into closed session for those three reasons? Return to work session, manager. If I read it, I'll probably make a mistake.
Do I have to read each one individually? Motion to go into closed session per Wisconsin statute 19.851G, per Wisconsin statute B, per Wisconsin statute 19851C, and C, per Wisconsin statute 19.851C. Is that adequate?
Specify, specify the reasons.
And, oh, you want me to read each one?
Kalmbach.
The first one is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be updated by the body with respect to litigation, which is or likely to become involved. Update on Kalmbach litigation. The second is considering employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee, of which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, specifically, police sergeants, 37-hour work week, and rates of pay. The third is considering employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility, specifically, the city manager evaluation.
Second.
Do I have to add, we will come into a work session, we'll come out of closed session and go into a work session?
And then I'll second that.
The motion is second, roll call vote, please.
Miller?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Deleke?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then reconvene in closed session.